We'll start the March meeting of the Georgetown Scott Camp Plan Zone and Commission. First item of business will be approval of the February invoices. If everyone's had time to look at them, we'll need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve February invoices.
Motion by Ms. Mizell.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Shirley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Next item of business is approval of the February 9th, 2017 minutes. There's no changes or questions? Need a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, a move we approved of minutes from February 9th meeting.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
I second.
Second by Ms. Mizell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Approval of the March agenda? And motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Caldwell. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Items for postponement withdrawal? There was one on here, wasn't there Joe?
Yeah, actually there's another one that's added.
Okay.
Item E, High Grove at Georgetown is, they've requested postponement with landmark.
Okay, we got two postponements. We got Landmark Shops, Marketplace. That's PDP 2017-06. Landmark Shops Marketplace is postponed. ZMA 2017-07, High Grove at Georgetown, that's a rezoning request. That has also been postponed. So if anyone's here for those, they are postponed.
The one on Eter Lane.
That's the one on Eter Lane. So it is postponed. When will it be heard Joe?
Your Eter Lane. It's postponed until next month.
Till next month, okay.
Yeah, your Eter Lane.
D and E.
It is. The zoning issue for that project is postponed till next month. Project.
Next item of business will be the consent agenda.
Second Thursday.
Will they send us another notice?
Joe, can you stand up and just go ahead and answer all these questions real quick?
Yeah, no, the notice won't go out. This is the notification here of the postponement. So it'll be updated on the website, so it will appear the date. But it'll be regularly in April.
Could we come by your office and get a letter that we could let you print?
Sure.
And hand it down?
Just to make sure we're clear that this is every yard student senior who is assisted.
Yes.
Assistant. Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Hospital elite, both of us, three of you guys.
If you could turn them into staff, be fine. Joe. Our next item of business is a consent agenda. We do have one item up for consent. No, we actually have two. PDP 2017-03, the Paul Hamer property. Is anyone here to speak against the Paul Hamer property? No one to speak against the Paul Hamer property, the preliminary development plan on that property? If not, we can take a motion for consent on that application.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, for PDP 2017-03 to go to this consent agenda.
A motion by Mr. Shirley.
Seconds.
A second by Mr. Cannon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. We also have another one eligible for consent. It's PDP 2017-08, Home to Suites by Hilton. Was there something we need to get worked out on that one?
Two parking spots.
Where did Joe go? Uh, okay. We found a difference in the potential ways for calculating the parking. And so based on your interpretation of the parking, it can either go consent or not. The language in the subregs states that it's one parking space per room plus one for every three employees, which is the 90 that you saw in the staff report. But it also says plus four spaces per 50 rooms. So based on that, there would be an additional seven or eight spaces required if you determine that strict reading. So Joe was just gonna let you know about that update and figure out whether or not you need a variance.
The Hilton?
Yes.
How much means?
The parking in the staff report, the 96 spaces, that was an error in my reading of the original. When I read, when I was putting the staff report together, I thought the standard was one per room and one per employee. So I put 96 in the staff report. When I went back and looked, finalizing the report, I saw it was one for three employees. So that was, they had enough. And then I, when I saved the report, it didn't, apparently I didn't save it or didn't print the right version. So that was an error in my report, the 96. It should have been. My interpretation of the standard was they met it. Megan pointed out, the last sentence of the standard said, "And additional parkings required for long, for rental units." My interpretation of that was that for mixed-use buildings, if you had a hotel where it was partially rent, you know, rental units, partially just normal hotel units, and they were gonna have some long-term rental portion of it, that that's what that was there to capture. So I didn't interpret this hotel as needing those extra spaces for that. But you all may interpret that differently. We can talk, if it needs to go through the regular staff report presentation, if you think that's an issue, we can just go ahead and present it and we can talk about it then. But I didn't, I didn't see that as needing those extra.
Go ahead Joe.
No, I'm seeing what everybody's thinking.
What do y'all think?
So you're happy with the 92 spaces?
Yeah, I think the, our parking requirement for a hotel, even, even an extended stay hotel, if it's not per, rooms permanently dedicated, you know, for long-term rental, you know, for yearly rental or six-month rental. I mean, if it's just really a hotel, you know, typical hotel that will rent some, you know, month-long rentals. I didn't think that was, the intent of that language was to capture that type of hotel. But that was my interpretation.
Mr. Chairman, would this go consent?
We have a motion by Mr. Wiseman.
I'll second.
To let it go consent.
I'd like to second that, Mr. Chair.
I'll second by Mr. Shirley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Anyone here for that application?
We actually have one more that's due consent.
Which one?
The subdivision flat for Bluegrass RV doesn't have any variances requested for it. The development plan shows, but the subdivision flat wasn't.
Didn't you put, I thought you put those two together or something?
I did, we didn't separate them for the residential and on the subdivision.
The Bluegrass.
We didn't do them together or separate them.
So which one can go consent?
The subdivision flat.
Let's just hear it all together.
Okay.
That's a little confusing. Let's just hear it all together. That's okay. I guess that's all on the consent agenda. So we have no old business, so we'll go into our new business. Charlie, could you swear everybody in please?
Oh, yes. Could those signed in to speak for an application, if you could stand and raise your right hand, please?
That's our move.
Yeah, keep one. Do you swear affirm the statements you're to make tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you.
Our first application is ZMA 2017-02. It's a lots, auto, sales zone change. This is a public area for a zone change. We'll open up the public area.
I don't think the applicant is here. I'm not sure if we can even hear this. Maybe ask Charlie. I don't wanna make a decision without them having that.
Joe, shouldn't they have posted that anyway? I didn't see any signs down there.
You're right.
There's no sign, there's no zone change signs down there at all. I haven't seen any.
Yeah, so we can't hear it.
Yeah. So what do you wanna do?
I don't know if we.
We need to ask Charlie to see?
Postpone or withdraw.
Charlie, they didn't post this at all about zone change or anything down there?
Not posted it, oh, well then, there's no question. Yeah.
What, is it just denied or what do we do?
Or postpone?
Well, in a sense, we can't really do anything, because it's not, it's not properly before you. So I think they've just got to go back and do all the right notices and then you can actually entertain it. But no, if it's not posted, you know, paper signage and all, I mean.
I didn't get a notice or anything.
Yeah, no.
It's in my backyard, so.
No, then we can't hear anything about it. Turn it down, prove it.
Okay.
We can't even continue it. They've just simply gotta start over.
All right, next thing on the agenda is PSP 2017-04, PDP 2017-05, the Bluegrass RV. Go ahead Matt.
So as you, as you mentioned, this is actually two applications. There's a preliminary subdivision flat where they're kinda rearranging roughly 39.8 acres into four parcels. There's some consolidation that's going on as part of that as well. But ultimately, they're dividing it up into, into four tracts, the sizes of which are listed here under the acreage section. One of them that we'll also be discussing in greater detail is 20.13 acres. Another one is 5.5, 10.16, and 4.05 acres. All these parcels are Zone B2, which is our highway commercial zoning district. They're located at 3034 Paris Pike, which is sort of at the intersection of Connector Road and Paris Pike. The surrounding zones are B2 Highway Commercial. B4 Community Commercial is located directly to the east. There's some R2 Zone Property, which is also to the east. And then to the north, it's bounded by A1 or Agricultural Property. So this is just an aerial photo of the project site. It's a redevelopment, if you will, of the old flea market site. So this is, this part here is the part that's Zone B2, or sorry, B4, as a neighboring parcel. This is the residentially-zoned neighboring parcel. This is the agricultural parcel. And then all of these properties here along Connector Road are Zone B2 Highway Commercial. So if we look at the subdivision flat first, so just, there's a little bit of an orientation change. As you look at this, on the previous aerial photo, north was, was up towards the ceiling. And this drawing north is, is towards the right-hand side of the screen. The subdivision flat complies with, with all of our regulations. It's showing the appropriate setbacks, including, including those from the residentially-zoned property and the agriculturally-zoned property at staff's request. The applicant did include a note for the setback along the agriculturally-zoned property indicating that, you know, should that in future become developed or be rezoned to commercial, that that 25-foot setback that they're showing there on that property line can be reduced to zero. The applicant will, you know, when they move into the final subdivision flat phase, they'll need to obtain all of the necessary signatures from the utility companies certifying that all the lots can be served by water, sewer, and electric, just so we don't have any issues moving forward. Moving on to their second application, the preliminary development plan. As I mentioned before, the applicant is looking to, is filing a preliminary development plan going back one, for this 28, roughly 20-acre parcel here on the eastern side of, sorry, I actually included some of this parcel back here. Runs this way, all the way along, and excludes this, this four acres in the back. But that's, that's this parcel here that they're, that they're proposing to develop and then, and build a 43,678-foot square building for the sales, some retail sales and maintenance of recreational vehicles. As you can see on the, on the development plan here, there's employee parking, well, customer and employee parking planned for the front here. They are showing an adequate amount of parking for the different uses that they're proposing. They have some RV staging and RV storage areas on the site, both on paved portions of the lot. The building will have 20-based service RVs. And they have spoken to the EMA office in terms of making sure there's proper containment for, for oil and other potential hazardous fluids that might be able to contaminate the water. At this time, this portion here, that's, and this is just my rough estimate, is sort of half of the property or the back half of the property is, is not proposed for development at this time. Although my understanding is that in future, they, they will look to, to use that portion of the property. And they are indicating a line of fencing surrounding the property with gates to sort of restrict some access. As far as circulation, the majority of the traffic will use, well, all of the traffic will use these two entrances. So this one off of Connector Road and this one off of Paris Pike. You know, the majority of the clientele will, you know, come in and park in this area. Obviously, I assume any RVs that are scheduled for service will have access to get through the gates and into the, the back portion of the lot. After looking at the, the traffic study, a lot of what, what the traffic study discussed was, you know, whether or not there was a need for left-turn lanes on the nearby roads. And the, the response from the traffic study was that, no, there's not a left-turn warranted at this time, given that, you know, both Connector Road here has a left-turn already, as well as Paris Pike has, has a left-turn lane already. It also talked about the level of service at the intersection and that, you know, the level of service in the year 2027 at the intersection is a level F, whether or not they, they build the project site or not. And so what they're, I guess what they are proposing with the, with the traffic study is that maybe some timing adjustments be made to the signal here at the intersection of Connector Road and Paris Pike. After talking with Ben, I think it's my next slide, yeah. He expressed some, some concerns after looking at the traffic study to the applicant, particularly these three. And I'm sure if you have any questions about these, Ben will be more than happy to discuss them in some way. But mostly, you know, left turns out of, out of the project site into the queue at Paris Pike. So really talking about making left turns here on the Connector Road out of the project site, you know, particularly at certain times of the day when, when traffic really backs up at Connector Road. You know, is that, is that feasible, is that safe for, for vehicles, especially large vehicles, to be making a left turn out of there? The geometry of the entrance in terms of, you know, making, making sharp turns with, you know, maneuvering through this chute to, to get onto and off of Connector Road. And then also just, you know, whether or not consideration has been made in the design for any potential widening of Connector, of that intersection in the future to potentially accommodate more traffic.
Is there a traffic study? Supposed to be on there.
They, they did submit a traffic study, but it didn't, it didn't address any of these, these concerns that we had. So if we look at some other, some other things that, from the, from the preliminary development plan, particularly the landscaping, so we'll start back here where it, where it butts residentially-zoned property. They are proposing to reduce the landscaping buffer from, I believe it was 15 feet. They're proposing to reduce it down to six feet and, and take the trees that were proposed for that area and actually move them over into this area on the west side of the property. I do, I do support that. There's a couple of reasons why. I can actually show you on this next slide. This is the, a picture the applicant provided of the tree line that runs along the eastern side of the property. There is a substantial, you know, tree line that runs along the property there with, you know, more than, I think it probably exceeds the one tree per 40 feet requirement that, that we have. And then the other, the other issue, and this one, I guess relates more to the reduction in the width. The applicant does have some, some paved area that runs fairly close to the property line that my understanding is that they, they might wish to incorporate in future phases of, of use on the project site, particularly on that back half. So I think there is, there is ample justification for, for reducing that landscaping buffer as well as, you know, moving some of those trees elsewhere on, on the project site. I actually meant to delete that note up there, so don't pay any attention to that. They've also requested a variance to relocate trees that would have been placed here along the front of the parking area, sort of screening it from the road. Obviously, that's not an ideal situation to, to lose that, that screening between the vehicular use area and the road. But there, you know, once again, there are some extenuating circumstances. There's fiber optic line that, I think you can barely read, but there's a fiber optic line that, that runs through this part as well as overhead electric. So there's, there are some, some factors, both below ground and above ground, that sort of justify potentially moving those trees. So these trees that would have been planted here, they're also proposing to move over into this area here in the western part of the property, as well as, I think some trees ended up getting moved here on, on the northern side. They are showing an appropriate amount of interior VUA landscaping for the, the customer and employee parking area. And they have requested a, a variance to be exempt from the interior landscaping area for, for these VUA areas back here, with the, the reasoning that, you know, that these areas are gonna be pretty much only accessed by, you know, large, non-maneuverable vehicles. And also with the, the reasoning that a similar variance was granted to a similar use nearby. So I think those reasons are, are fairly reasonable as well. The canopy requirements for the project site, at present, with all of the trees that they're proposing to plant and proposing to keep, they're only proposing to have roughly 10% canopy coverage. The canopy requirements that we passed would require them to have 23% canopy coverage. I'm recommending that we temporarily grant them the 10% that they're requesting and, and request that they bring the remainder, when, when they develop the remainder of the property, that they bring that total up to at least 20% at that time. And, and the reasoning behind that is, you know, even though, you know, they are likely proposing a, a large paved area on the back half of the property for more storage of recreational vehicles, with that amount of pavement surface, it is important that we get canopy coverage to, you know, reduce the heat island effect, additional stormwater storage. Trees drink a lot of water and store that in, in the trunks and leaves rather than, you know, having that runoff and overflow rivers and things like that. And it's, it doesn't seem unreasonable to ask for, for 20%, given that it's the, the minimum canopy requirement that we have for any of our commercial districts. So with, with those things sort of in mind, as far as the, the preliminary subdivision flat, I am recommending approval of that. There's only five conditions that I'm listing with that approval, all of which are fairly basic. The fifth one on there deals with the, just getting. The fifth one on there deals with the, just getting a statement of how the access easement, that's going to provide access to three of those lots will be maintained, whether that's going to be equally between those three lots or however, you know, they want to set that up. Just making sure we get that in writing so future property owners who might buy those tracks know upfront what the responsibilities are. I don't know if you do want to take action on that, and then we can discuss my recommendation on the other. Or should I go through that now and we can let the applicant speak?
I kind of feel like we are separating a little bit. Do this one and then?
Okay, yeah, we can do that one.
Does anybody have any questions on the subdivision plat?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Did we ever determine whether it would be possible to put sidewalk along, it's a fairly short distance that long that they border?
Yeah, I reached out to the KYTC District Seven, and I did talk to somebody. He referred me to somebody else who I've not yet been able to get in touch with. So I'm still in discussions with them on that. I do remember when we had a separate application come in for Cherry Blossom Way. I believe the state's response at that time was that, you know, it was permissible for the applicant to put a sidewalk in the state right of way as long as they got an encroachment permit from the state.
I think we need the sidewalk.
Yeah.
To block traffic in that area.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea.
Any other questions on the subdivision plat, preliminary subdivision plat? This would be this one here. If there's no other questions on this, we can take a motion to approve or deny the subdivision plat.
Oh, yeah, I guess so. Might as well, since Bruce is sitting back there.
I'm in too big a hurry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bruce.
Go ahead. I almost overlooked you.
For the record, I'm Bruce Langford. I'm here with Mr. Ted Mims, who's on behalf of the owner, and Chris Mitchell, the engineer, who's worked on these plans. What can you say when you got a good recommendation of approval except that's good? And I think Matthew covered everything from A to Z. He's been working with Chris. Chris worked on these plans. We always want a recommendation of approval. We got one. If you have questions, I want you to ask them.
I want to show you this. This is what you proposed to build in the?
Yes. That will look better than what's there, right?
Always an improvement, right? Any questions now? If you have questions about the plan, my Chris can answer those. If you have a question about what they're going to do out there, well, try it.
Any questions for the applicant?
I've got one question from Mr. Langford. As far as the existing units that are sitting out there now, obviously, were put there before going through the proper procedure to have them there on the property. But it's my understanding at workshop, we've talked about, they are asking for conditional use through, or have been turned down.
They've been turned down, and that's still in the, still in the makings.
I've got a little bit of, I don't have a problem with the subdivision plat or the preliminary development plan, so to speak. But I've got a, I've got a problem going forward on this when we've got an issue there that they're not in compliance to our ordinances at this point. If the units had been removed during this period, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But the units still remain sitting there where they were, where they always have been.
Briefly, the history.
So maybe you can explain it a little better to ease my mind.
Well, they got the property in November of last year, 2016. And shortly thereafter, they moved the RVs onto the property. They thought a B two zoning classification would allow that. There was no intent on their part whatsoever to go around the zoning ordinance or commit some sort of a violation. So when they moved the vehicles on the site, either a complaint was filed by someone or in the public or the staff with the planning commission picked up on it, notified the owners that they should apply for conditional use permit. They immediately applied for a conditional use permit. They got a recommendation of approval from the planning commission staff. But for whatever reason, I won't go into now, the board of adjustments denied the application. While this was going on, the owner also filed an application for this development plan preliminary approval and subdivision plat preliminary approval, both of which you're hearing tonight. There was never any intent whatsoever, and I've been over this very thoroughly with Mr. Mims and with Chris. You know, people coming in from another jurisdiction sometimes think they're doing what's right. Maybe they should have, hindsight tells them they should have talked to the planning commission before rather than after. But immediately, when they were notified, they started the process of doing what they felt was right. And there was not any intent, if they have given that impression. Mr. Mims wants me to be sure and apologize, so I apologize for them because there was no intent whatsoever to go around the zoning ordinance. And I think that's proven by the fact that they're filing these applications and asking for permission and approval and paying the fees.
I could agree with the whole lot of what you said, Mr. Langford. My only problem is, is obviously they found out they were in violation. I've not seen any adjustment in good faith, so to speak, to say, oh, well, we need to move some of these out of here or an attempt to, you know what I'm saying? That's my only problem. And I can understand where they, I've done the same thing. And I didn't know that it was wrong, you know, but then I corrected it immediately.
Yeah.
That's the only part I don't understand.
In a B two classification, you know, you can have outdoor storage. The planning commission, I guess, or the board of adjustment takes a position, you can have outdoor storage in conjunction with a B two use. And that would be, in this case, the sales business, RVs and so forth. But they, if I, I don't want to say too much because we have an appeal filing on the board of adjustments. I don't want to say too much that would affect that either way. That's why I said I wouldn't go into detail.
Charlie, that's my question for you. With the appeal to the board of adjustments, should we move forward with this application or?
I really don't think one, well, let me back up. John's concern is reasonable, of course. We've had that same discussion in similar circumstances before. But as far as they're filing the appeal, there really is no connection between that and holding up on this. I think they can go along parallel. Obviously, as a practical matter, when this is, assuming this gets approved and they do the things that the approved plans require them to do, at some point, they're going to be able to have this outdoor storage. Obviously, it's going to be in a way that's approved and appropriate in that area. So at some point, the appeal may well become moot. The appeal might possibly be resolved before this is. But they can actually go, I think, on parallel tracks. It still doesn't resolve John's question, and that's a legitimate question. And you all can, if you will, add an additional condition or something if you see that's appropriate. It's very clear, the board of adjustment said, no, you know, get them out of there. Do this procedure, follow, you know, the rules, but you can't have this in the meantime. Now, just because that's been appealed doesn't put anything on hold. And in fact, just because it's been appealed doesn't put the board of adjustment on hold. We don't usually push enforcement while appeals are pending, but that's just always been our choice. That's not any rule. To get a stay of enforcement, they actually have to go into circuit court and ask for it. And they've not done that.
So the intent, as it stands now, is for those, those RVs will only be stored there? None of them will be, there won't be any effort to sell RVs off of that property until this is done?
Yeah, if we can get this approval and the subdivision plat, development plan, we go next time and come and get the final development plan, the final subdivision plat, get all that approval, well, that'll go away. That'll be, become a part of the overall total development of the property.
But I'm saying that they wouldn't be marketing RVs until this project was complete. Is that correct?
I think that's safe to say is. They would not be.
They would just simply be parked in the back area?
The planning staff wrote them a letter after the board of adjustments meeting and told them that they had been denied the permit and that they gave them a deadline to move the RVs or else five hundred dollar a day fine. So we didn't have time to do both, so we had to file the appeal, ask for a stay of that enforcement. If we get approval tonight and the subdivision plans and development plans, that all goes away. That was merely a protective measure to get a stay on the enforcement of the penalties. Otherwise, we might move them out one day and be permitted to move them back the next.
There's a lot of gravel area in there. I'm sure that's a great place to, mud or no mud, you can move things around in there, but I just wanted to make sure that they're only going to be stored there and there won't be customers coming in and out while this project is being built.
Mr. Mims?
Yes, sir. They're not, they're not intended. And I, I take, excuse me, Charlie, what?
Oh, do you swear affirm statements you're about to give? It'd be the truth to the best of your information and belief.
Yes, sir, I do. I take blame for this. These guys from Paintsville, if I could have sat on them a little harder. But before I knew it, after they bought the property, they had these things going. And if, and it wasn't the staff, it wasn't anybody, if I could have sat on them, it wouldn't have happened. They have no place to put them now. They'd have to go rent someplace to put them. So if you all could let them go like they are until we get this building built, it would be very much appreciated. If you say you got to move them, then they'll have to find a place to move them and get them out of there, so. They're from Paintsville. They thought they bought the property and it's ours now and it's on B two. Let me go ahead and put them over there. That's exactly what happened.
I'm kind of like John, though. You're going against the other board by making that decision they've made. You know, and this appeal, when is it going to go before the courts or whatever it is?
Oh, these things aren't on any kind of fast track. We were just served with it. We've got twenty days to file our answer. And ordinarily, when there's any kind of discussions and whatnot with staff, I don't hustle up and do that because I want to give everybody a chance to kind of work things out if that's possible. Once we get it into court, we have to compile all the record, get all that filed, within file briefs with the judge. I mean, I don't know what all, that building's not going to be done.
So they get into it, so they get into it, and they still go with the board, what the board said. What happens then?
Then they're going to have to get, hustle up and move some RVs.
If we've already approved it, what are you going to do?
Well, but it won't be approved for putting in the RVs until they've actually done everything. So unless you all give him some sort of leeway, they really aren't going to be able to store anything there until they've actually performed what's on their development plan. So basically, what we're being asked to do is to kind of let one drag just a little bit to give them a chance to get some of their development in so they would have a legitimate place to park it as opposed to parking on empty undeveloped property, which is what's been turned down.
How about we do this? They, it is under appeal. So how about if we put another condition in stating, however we want to word this, that if their appeal is turned down to go any further with the development plan, or we could word it before, because if we, if we do the subdivision plan, it's going to be a done deal. But the development plan can be held up with conditions. So if we, since it was an honest mistake, then we say, okay, we'll go along with this depending on the results of the appeal. If the appeal is denied, then the RVs on site must be moved out during construction and final development.
Well, they've got a variance for that, isn't there? They got asking for a variance?
No, but that's after the fact. So you're actually not supposed to have any kind of product like that on a site while you're developing it. You need to have the development finished, your CO on the development before you move anything else on the property.
Because they can, their development plan, they're asking for a variance to be able to keep those on the property, right?
They asked for that at workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have that. It's one of our variances here.
I remember I was talking about it at workshop.
Well, I guess technically, they could move them over to the other part of the twenty acres that's not being developed. It would not be on the development site.
I don't know if that's.
But that's the same.
But then you're.
They requested it at workshop, but I don't know that that's necessarily appropriate. It's not, it's not a variance like some of the others that the planning commission typically brings. You know, maybe allowing a building a little bit taller or a little bit closer to the setback line. It's, it is more of a conditional use, which is traditionally the purview of the board of adjustment rather than the planning commission.
Yep. So it's probably not our decision to start with. I think all we're going to do is allow them to proceed with this.
And board of adjustments deals with the other.
The subdivision, this development plan, and then board of adjustments has to say whether they can keep or vacate those.
But Charlie, didn't I, maybe I misunderstood you. Did you not say, and also, Mr. Langford, they filed the appeal to avoid the daily fines. Charlie, you said you're delaying your response to see what the decision we make tonight, correct? Is that what I understood?
But I usually, I usually don't rush out and file my response the next day. Bruce delivered this, what, Thursday, Friday, or last week? And usually, my response is probably not going to be filed till close to the end of the twenty days anyway. Number one, because I can't get to it, and number two, hopefully, people kind of work some things out. If in fact, there are things that can be worked out.
And if this is worked out tonight, then you will not have to file a response.
That moves it along. It really doesn't work it out. As John pointed out accurately, you can't really do anything on site until you finish your development and you get your certificate of occupancy. At that point, you move stuff, you move people, and, you know, you move things on in. Until then, you really can't. This would take some kind of special permission, which I'm not even sure there's really any type of special permission in the ordinance. Matt was saying, you know, this is sort of like a conditional use. Well, it's sort of like one, but it's not one listed in the ordinance, so it really isn't appropriate. This is almost more of a kind of an indulgence that might be allowed by the commission during construction, but that's not part of the usual process. And I think it would take some kind of special, which is a bit of a problem because what special approval you might give runs counter to what the board of adjustment, who has primary jurisdiction, this kind of thing. So I mean, it's problematic. And I recognize it's problematic too because there's a whole bunch of RVs out there, and that's not an easy thing to even find a place for them, much less to get them moved in a timely fashion. So, I mean, this is, I mean, inadvertence and all that, that's fine, but it created a pretty good size problem that just doesn't fit real well in our rulebook.
Here's my opinion on it, and I don't know if it bounced too much, but I've had several conversations with Joe and I think Megan too. I drove in out there one day. Gate was open. I pulled up, met this fella out there driving around in a truck. Y'all fixing some RVs, are you? Yeah? I said, when can we start buying them? He said, well, if there's anything on the slot you want to look at, just let me know. We'll be glad to show it to you. After that, I didn't have much approval of it. I felt like they were sidestepping the system, and that's just my opinion. Whether it bounced anything to you guys, I don't know, but that's where I stand with it. I feel like the same thing's going to happen if they stay out there. So I feel like we'd be stepping on board of adjustments toes if we move forward with this.
If I may.
That's just my opinion.
Well, consistent, I think, with what you just said, if I might make a suggestion. The board has spoken, and we can go ahead and answer the suit and kind of hustle the court up to get a decision. What you all need to do is if this is an appropriate plan, you know, fine, approve it, get them to work. But some of that work's going to require some of these RVs to be moved anyway. But some of that work's gonna require some of these RVs to be moved anyway. I mean, I, I don't know how far deep that goes, but it sure looks like some of these are sitting where the work's got to be too. And if we hustle it up and the judge makes his determination, which I feel confident he will, that these things are not supposed to be there, then they're gonna get a nice court order to get them out of there. And in a relatively timely fashion, those things are gonna have to move. Plus, some of them are gonna have to move anyway, 'cause they're gonna be in the way. On top of all that, even with the appeal pending, if they don't ask for a stay of enforcement, we can possibly talk the county attorney's office into doing a criminal action in district court for violation of the zoning ordinances. That's where the five hundred dollars a day comes in. Uh, so I mean, that, we have relatively good-sized stick here. Uh, this is not like some of them where there's lots of interpretation. I mean, they're not supposed to be there, period. Uh, we have a board decision that's pretty clear. So, you all can do your thing without giving them any special approvals for anything, which there seem to be a good opinion that it, it doesn't deserve that. And then we can proceed as we ordinarily would with an enforcement.
Can I ask you a question, please? I'm gonna assume that, first, let me ask, I guess I'll ask your opinion. Because your guys are gonna be out there onsite checking the progress of this. What, what would you say, or what would Mr. Johnson or Mr. Carter say if they went out to a job like this, initial development in a situation was like it is? What, I mean, what would be standard procedure for that?
I guess we could, if it was, if it's not standard, we know based on the results of this, I mean, we could issue a stop work order out there and, um, ask it to stop. I think there's a lot of room beyond where they're planning to build. I mean, there's a lot of storage area back there. They could get stuff out of the way. I don't think sales going on while they're back there would be a good thing. I mean, that should be, that should be halted or whatever, 'cause you don't want people driving through the construction site, whatever else going on while they're, while they're building. So I, definitely should be sales, but I, in my opinion, there's a lot of room left open in the back of the site, so I, does that answer?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna, yeah, I knew what your, I, I assumed what your answer was gonna be. I just wanted everybody else to hear it. And then, then we would feel more comfortable about continuing on with this, knowing you and our other staff is gonna be out there monitoring the situation, would, and would have no problem in issuing a stop work order if, in fact, they were trying to sell and whatever. And, and personally, I, I'm, there was a mistake made, maybe two mistakes made. We all make mistakes, but personally, I just don't wanna see it continue instead of precedence. We can't, you know what I'm saying? We've gotta treat everybody the same here, and it's a pretty big mess, even though I'm sure those fellows didn't think anywhere close to that, that it would be such. I just wanna be assured that if we okay this, then during the process, you guys and ladies will keep an eye on it, and if there is a problem, stop it. That's why I wanted you to come up and...
And I know you're, you're all aware that we, we do, um, we're not onsite a hundred percent of the time. I mean, it's weekly visits sometimes, daily if there's a lot going on, so, um, but we'd be there by no means watching over the site the whole time.
Ben, I've got one more question for you. Step away. On Monday, the gentleman who's not here, who was here Monday, had mentioned moving all the RVs to the back or the adjoining property. Could they do that, Charlie? Maybe you need to answer that, or Ben, it doesn't matter.
Well, either way, uh, I think Bruce accurately stated, in fact, we discussed this the other day. Storage, just picking you out of field and storing stuff i- is not permitted under the ordinance.
Okay.
It's permitted in the B two zone where it's accessory to a B two use. Well, once they develop the property, that's what this will be. It's permitted in an I one, accessory to a light industrial use. Uh, it's permitted in an I two, period, but you gotta have an I two use. An empty field doesn't have a use.
Okay.
So it's just, it's not appropriate. Now again, that doesn't mean, just like we've allowed at times, you know, an extra construction road and, you know, done some things to accommodate, not usually just outright violations, but to accommodate various things, uh, or to protect certain things. You know, that may be something that the board might wanna consider, but in general, this just isn't recognized under the ordinance. You just don't do this until you've got a project that this is, is accessory to, and that's after your CO is usually given.
Thanks, Charlie.
And it could be at this point with the situation that we're in, possibly the best thing to do would be move this thing along. They get it built and then compliance, you know?
Yeah, I have no problem.
There's different ways of looking at it.
That shortens the period of time when we've got an active violation, uh, out there.
Yeah.
I have no problem with them going there. I, just to state that, I don't have a problem. I think it's gonna be a very nice project there. I just don't think it's fair to the people on the other corner who are building theirs the way we expect it to be built while somebody else has got RVs sitting on there.
Yeah, and storing their stuff wherever it's supposed to be stored, so, yeah.
I, I just don't think it's fair, and we need to...
Mr. Jones, I, I, I can see all of you are, are, that it's rubbed you the wrong way, and I don't blame you. And I'm gonna do everything I can in the next thirty days to find a place to move those trailers. I can't, I can't promise it, 'cause I don't have the owners here, but I can tell you that I've got some leeway with them, and I'm gonna do everything I can to get them out of there.
But you guys have a RV place in Lexington, right?
Yeah, the RV place in Lexington got overrun. Yeah, they're, they're selling them, and they, and, and I gotta tell you that any of those guys selling those RVs, if you walked up to them and they were in the Walmart, they'd tell you, "Come on over, I almost ate one." That's, that, that's the way they are, but, uh, but if we can get them out of there in the next thirty days, then we'll do it. It's got some paved area in the back where we'd love to be able to do that, but I understand, you know, I've been in this a long time. I understand how the rules work. So if I can, if I can do that, if y'all, if y'all let us go subject to getting the RVs out in such amount of days, then we'll, we'll go back to the owners and we'll work like the devil to get it done, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I gotta say something about the letter that the owner got, you know, citing a violation. KRS one hundred nine ninety-one, that's where that penalty comes in. And it very clearly says, Charlie knows this, it very clearly says, "If convicted or if found guilty, they shall be assessed a penalty." They're entitled to a hearing. They haven't had their hearing on that appeal yet. They're entitled to a hearing on that appeal before you can assess those fines.
Yeah, that, those fines are not assessed by us.
That's the reason I filed the appeal, to be sure that if this, if, if we don't get approval on this tonight, of these things, if worse come to worst, we're entitled to a hearing on that appeal. Did the Board of Adjustments do the right thing? Did they follow the right procedure? Did they give the owner applicant all the rights he's entitled to? We won't know that until he has his hea- hearing on that appeal. So, the assessment of enforcement is premature until he has an appeal heard. And I'm working with Charlie. I told Charlie he can file an answer when he wants to. If he needs more time, that's fine. Because we wanna get approval of this. We wanna get this thing going tonight, so we can get approval, get everything going, and clear up that problem. And if we have a hearing on the appeal, and if the judge finds or the court finds that the penalties should be assessed, they'll be assessed. Otherwise, we're gonna dismiss the appeal. We won't file that appeal if we don't have to. We won't ask for the hearing. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Any more questions for the applicant or any more discussion? Yes, Mr. Roberts, if you wanna come up. Did you swear again, Mr. Roberts?
Do I have to do that?
Charlie, I swear again. You mean I haven't sworn you yet?
You have not, you've never sworn.
I just sworn at you.
You sworn at me.
Do you swear affirm what you're about to say to be the truth to the best of your information and belief?
Yes. Thank you all. I am Steve Roberts, representing the B four lot next door to this property. Uh, the eleven, eleven acres, um, is owned by the estate of Sue Rogers Johnson.
That's to the east?
It's to the east, correct. It is, it has come to my, our understanding that what we're calling the right-of-way, which we're considering a roadway through that property and next to our property, that our eleven acres that we're quote trying to sell right now is supposed to have an access from that road. What I'm seeing on the, from the development plan is access from Pears Pike into their property, and then the roadway going, the right-of-way going down the left, the right side of their property. I've just been, it's been mentioned to me that there's a possibility that planning zoning would, will ask for an access to our eleven acres from that right-of-way. Just wondering if that is correct or not. And, and currently, currently, if that's, if, if, if that is the case, will it, will the public be allowed to come across their property onto this right-of-way, onto our property, that we're trying to get sold?
So, I guess this isn't zoomed out far enough to see, but what we have asked for the, the applicant tonight is to, is to reserve some right-of-way here along this part of their property. The Rocky Creek Development over here has reserved a little portion of this corner for that right-of-way to continue here. And then, if and when, uh, this, this property here, um, if, if that was to develop, we would ask for a right-of-way to then provide access to Pears Pike. And the, the point, the theory is that we would then have access, or potentially have a right-of-way up to here, and then if the Finley property was ever to develop, we could ask for right-of-way to provide access all the way up to Old Oxford and provide another connection.
So you have, so you would have two entrances there, is that correct?
Well, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be an entrance to their, to their commercial property, but what it would be, would be an access here back along to, back here. It would be, it's basically be a road to supplement Connector Road and provide additional connection.
It'd be a collector's street kinda thing, a standalone street, not just simply access through to those lots.
So at this time, they're not gonna have access to your property. We're just at the, since they're, they're platting property right now, we're asking for some area to be set aside in case the city wanted to construct a road in the future.
The eleven acres that we're selling, see the road, Ken, is it, is it Kendall Road on the right side? Does that say Kendall?
No, it's Falmouth Drive.
Falmouth? Sorry, Falmouth. Falmouth separates this property, these two, this eleven acres, in half, not in half, but in three quarters. My, the question I'm having is, is in the, in the future scheme of things, uh, will there be a possible stoplight at Falmouth? That, that the property that we're trying to sell has a ridge to it. And from what I'm understanding, we're, we're under, with the understanding that there, we would have access to the property from the right-of-way. Maybe, maybe not, but we're just wondering if that is the case. If not, we need to make sure that we're telling the public who may look at it what the possibilities are to access the property from Pears Pike.
Uh, which, which right-of-way are you hoping to have access from, Pears Pike or from Falmouth?
See the blue, see the blue line?
Yeah.
Well, Falmouth is there.
Yeah.
But the blue line is, is, is the right-of-way that I'm talking about. And see, it cut, it projects itself all the way down to Pears Pike. Currently, you've got an access onto the possible, onto their property.
This, this one, this access here.
Yes, that right there, and then it would come over there like that.
Well, I mean, that, that's just an access for their property, uh, right now. Um, the, the right-of-way that we're, that we're talking about proposing would, would just, would not come out at that entrance there. It would come out actually on this property that you, you represent.
Straight down into it?
Yeah, it would come along the side here, and then it would kind of cut over across the Rocky Creek property and then come out, you know, maybe somewhere around here.
Okay. That, that's what we did not know.
Okay.
So it would not, we would not come down to, down the blue line?
Yeah, no, you, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come down the blue line all the way. It would come down the blue line halfway and then come over.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So more or less split that property, is that correct?
Um, yeah, I mean, that, the, the location hasn't been determined, but yeah, some, probably somewhere roughly in the middle.
Any other questions? Anyone have any other questions? Any more comments from the commission?
Chairman, I, I think we've discussed this a long time. The, uh, I would go on and move that we approve PSP twenty seventeen dash oh four, the preliminary subdivision, subdivision plan. And we'll leave, we'll leave the rest of it up to Board of Justice.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Smith to approve the preliminary subdivision plan. We got a second by Mr. Solsky. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion is approved. Now, we'll move on to the preliminary development plan.
So with the, with the development plan, um, I guess I have a somewhat altered, since we've gotten this, the, the traffic study after our workshop meeting, I've altered the, uh, the recommendation only slightly. So if, uh, my, my recommendation basically is if, if you feel comfortable with the results of the traffic study and, and with the, the entrances as proposed on the, on the development plan, then I recommend approval still. I mentioned that, you know, Ben and I have some concerns, um, uh, with, with the, the entrance, particularly the one on, on Connector Road.
Do we have any say so on that, Matt, since that is a state road? 'Cause we went through that with the Buffalo Wild Wings.
I mean, they're, they'll have to go through the state permit process, um, but I mean, other, other than that, I'm not, I'm not sure, um, I mean...
I don't know if any of y'all remember that, but I, we, we didn't want Buffalo Wild Wings to come in off of Connector Road.
And they got approval anyway, no matter what we said from the state, so it seems like that's all up to the state.
I think from, from talking with Ben, it's not necessarily that, that we have an issue with there being an entrance on Connector Road. I think our preference would be for, for a right-in, right-out, or at least maybe a realignment of the, the geography or geometry of, of the entrance. Is that, is that correct?
And, yes, I think the, I think the state would have to, I mean, I think, Charlie, you answer. Wouldn't, wouldn't Planning Commission at first say, or?
Well, we would, but ultimately, a state road, the state makes the final decision. I, I'm, I'm certain that they take into consideration what we would prefer, uh, what, you know, our recommendations and all that. But at least always in the past, if they had a different idea, the different idea is what carried the day, 'cause it's a state road and they have exclusive jurisdiction over it.
I mean, I kinda agree with you. I'd like to say right-in, right-out only, right there.
Yeah, I think, I mean, and my, my thoughts are that, you know, left turns at that intersection, particularly, you know, when, when, when traffic is backed up on Connector Road, would be, would be an unsafe situation.
It, it's, it's almost impossible.
Unmaneuverable vehicles.
It's almost impossible to get out of the little shell station right there, much less that getting closer to the stoplight.
But, uh, to go, to go along with that, and, and we can discuss that more, uh, just to finish this out, um, I, there are four variances associated with the development plan. Um, they're all related to the landscaping. Several of them, or two of them are related to moving, uh, tree, required trees elsewhere on the site. Uh, one of them, uh, as we mentioned, talked about reducing the width of the landscaping buffer. Uh, as I mentioned before, there is an existing tree line and some existing pavement in that area, which, which makes, in, in my opinion, makes that somewhat justified. Uh, and the other one, uh, is, is to temporarily allow for a reduction in the canopy coverage. And my, my suggestion is that, that be allowed with the idea that, uh, when the rest of the site is developed, that they meet, uh, our canopy requirements. The conditions that I'm recommending, uh, many, many of them are, are standard conditions. Um, I'll point out any that are not. All, all of those ones are, are fairly standard with our, uh, development plan applications. So, number eleven here addresses the canopy requirement that I mentioned before. Uh, any future development on the project site, I'm recommending that they bring the canopy requirements up, or canopy coverage up to at least twenty percent. Number twelve here, um, so if, 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 if they want outdoor storage of anything other than recreational vehicles, if for some reason they have uh, extra tires that they wanna store on the project site, or some additional product that they're looking to sell, uh, you know, retail... that they're looking to sell, uh, you know, retail sale of other than recreational vehicles, that does require a conditional use permit from the Board of Adjustment for outdoor storage. So I just wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission and the applicants are clear by including that commission, condition. Uh, and then, uh, condition thirteen is also, uh, something that's, that's understood in the regulations, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, both sides were clear on that one as well, that, uh, the only, the only place that's approved for storage of recreational vehicles are the places that they've indicated in the development plan.
Matt, I have one, one comment on the number eleven, future development, that, that would trigger the twenty percent canopy coverage?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way we can set up? What, what if that's ten, fifteen years down the road? I mean, can we make that five years?
Make that timeline shorter, or, um, I mean, that's, that, I mean, that, you, you could certainly do something like that, yeah.
I hate to see that go indefinitely.
I mean, that's.
I'll see if it hadn't been met, I mean, that's just me speaking out loud, it hadn't been, it hadn't been developed in five years and they needed to bring the, the front end up to twenty percent.
I mean, that, that, that certainly, you could alter that condition, uh, and add a time factor unto it. I don't think that would be an issue.
Is it ten percent, we can only unpack the site, or is it ten percent of their, fifty percent of the site?
Um, yeah, the, the ten percent really came, I mean, that's what they're proposing right, um, right now. Generally, they would need twenty-three percent, uh, coverage, uh, considering the amount of canopy coverage they're preserving. And so the.
Is it on, is it ten percent of the portion of the site that's being developed?
Oh, no, ten percent of, of the entire twenty acres, yes, sorry. Yeah, not, not twenty percent of the remainder, twenty percent of the entire site, yeah, I got it. Sorry about that.
Matt, on that, reducing that landscape buffer?
Mm-hmm.
It's going from twenty-five to six feet. Why would we do that along a residential area?
Um.
Cause we have no idea what that's going to be back there later on.
Yeah, uh, I, I, there were, there were, um, a couple of things that, that came to, to mind for me, uh, on reducing that. Uh, the first is that, I mean, they do have an existing tree line that, that is partially on their property and partially on, on, there's a, a small, uh, narrow strip of property owned by, uh, some company that I actually looked up on, uh, the Secretary of State's website, and they've been filed papers since two thousand eight or so. Um, but part of this tree line exists on that neighboring property, so the, you know, maybe the existing tree buffer is a little bit wider than, um, you know, the six feet that if you grant the variance they would have. Um, the other, the other thing is that, um, there's this existing pavement, and, and with the requests that were, that we made of the applicant, um, to include some area for potential future right-of-way, um, would go through this area as well. So, um, I think in, in, you know, having a, you know, twenty-five foot landscaping buffer, uh, given that there's, you know, a little bit wider than, than what we're counting on their property alone, uh, existing tree line, and, and that, some of that area would be in the potential future right-of-way, it seemed a reasonable to allow them to, to reduce that down some line.
What is that little slipper? J A, it says J A H.
Uh, J A H was the, was the, the owner at one time of, of, of this property that they're proposing to develop. I'm not sure why, uh, this little, this little section was, uh, kept as, uh, under ownership and not sold to the applicants. I'm not entirely sure.
That doesn't need to be incorporated with something that's there already?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know what to do with it. Um, it's, I mean, I don't, I don't own it, so I can't, uh, really do anything with it. I mean, my, my guess would be that at some point in the future, you know, maybe purchased by one of the neighboring properties or, or something like that.
There's no way that you can keep that to twenty-five feet?
Uh, I mean, we certainly could, could require that they keep the, keep the landscaping buffer to twenty-five feet. Uh, I mean, I mean, that's, that's a requirement you could make. I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that the entire twenty-five feet would, would be populated by, by trees and landscaping.
I think the big issue, John, is a lot of this has become a road in the future.
There's no guarantee on that either.
Yeah, there's, there's no guarantee that the road would, that the city would.
That is a plan.
Would, would you vote, or, you know, if it does, what, what timeline that might be on, uh, considering there's, there's other properties involved.
My opinion, I think it ought to stay at twenty-five feet, that's just my opinion.
The required motion?
Uh, if it stays twenty-five feet, would that involve taking up the pavement?
I mean, they, they wouldn't, I mean, as long as you, you think, as long as the landscaping, uh, that's, that exists there meets the requirement, they wouldn't need to remove the pavement. No, it just, I mean, it basically means that they wouldn't be able to, to really, you know, in future, use that property, or that, that space for, you know, you know, I guess, anything else. They wouldn't be able to pave it as part of a parking lot or anything like that.
If I may comment on that, Chris Mitchell, Palmer Engineering, design, civil engineer for the project. The reason why we had to, we asked for the variance reductions because of the road. The road was there, it exists in the property, so we felt like we wanted to keep the road in, in use and I had to tear it out. Uh, so we, we, that's what we asked for, reduction to six feet, cause that was the amount of space between the property line and the, uh, road for landscaping that could actually be placed there, so, um, I mean, we can.
What would that road be used for?
Uh, just access, uh, I guess to maintain, to maintain the access there that's currently on the property, going through from, uh, the gas RV to the back. I mean, we, well, either it's six feet twenty-five, I don't think it really matters to us. We, we have provided the property perimeter trees that were supposed to be there and left at different locations. We're just trying to clean it up and make sure that we were in, in compliance because the existing road is currently located there.
And that was another one, you, so we're gonna take the trees from that buffer and move them somewheres else?
Yeah, um, I can show you.
I don't like trees up there too.
Um, so that, yeah, the trees that were proposed to be along here, or there's that existing tree line from the photo, they moved some of those here and some, and some of them here in this area on, on the western side.
Seems like to me it makes more sense to put the trees next to where the residential area is going to be instead of blocking off the area back in behind them. Just makes sense to me.
There could be a issue there with, unless they tore the pavement up, you know, we've talked about this before too, and we worked on our UV landscaping, trying to reduce it somewhat, because if you, if you make them with the existing tree line there and then make them plant new trees, it really may not be, I don't know, in this situation, I just want to bring this up. It may not be practical because you're wasting your time and effort and money because it's just not, it's gonna be overcrowded.
Large material trees, shake it up.
Instead of giving them some space to actually grow like they're supposed to.
That was our concern. We were, with the existing tree line right there, placing a second tree row in parallel, that close, we may kill off each, keep killing each other off because their seed plants are close together. So we thought, uh, a good alternative solution was to place the trees in, in that green space area so they could, they could properly grow without having any issues.
No more comments, questions? No more discussion? Mr. Langford?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, we're okay with the, uh, his recommendation of approval on the development plan. That's good. He spent plenty of time on it. He's made a good report. The only thing we would, um, have some concern about, the department of right-of-way, right-in, right-out, as long as it's okay with them, it's okay with us.
Yeah, I'd like to see y'all consider that. I think, you know how tough it is out there. It's a tough spot.
But everything else, uh, he's, he's talking about, uh, we're okay with? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
My only thought about the right-in and right-out is most of those RVs are trying to get to the expressway, so if you make them go right out of that parking lot, that means they're gonna come all the way down towards Walmart, and then we're still gonna have to come back up. Cherry Blossom will get back on the expressway. I don't know.
If they're going north.
That's a lot safer.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to get out. It is gonna be hard to pull out left, no doubt. It's gonna be hard, only certain times of the day.
Oh, it's all day long.
Yeah, Parrish Pike would be the best way to get out.
Proper sign to take a, uh.
Yeah, just a thought.
Any other discussions?
You gonna keep it to twenty-five feet, or you gonna let them go with the six feet?
That's whatever somebody wants to make a motion as.
I, I'll make a motion to approve, and I'm even okay with the six foot, because if you, if you don't, then they're, they don't have really the use of that concrete drive-through there, and, and you're gonna make them dig it up?
What, what, if they develop the rest of it, they're gonna have to dig it up anyway.
I'll let them dig it up when they develop, they come back and develop, and I'm okay with it the way it is. So I'll make a motion to approve.
With the, uh, variances?
With the current variances. Was there one through thirteen?
No, variances are.
I'm sorry, variances, five variances, yes, sir.
The four variances.
Thirteen condition, yes, sir.
And then, uh, as noted in the workshop, that, uh, condition number nine was already on there twice.
Correct.
We, we, uh, scratched condition number nine. So you had a motion with the, included with the variances?
Included the variances, yes, sir, and the conditions of approval.
Motion by Mr. Solsky with the variances and the conditions of approval. Want to need a second or a second?
Oh. We get, motion second, I, I didn't want to mention, I'd, I'd love to have something in here about the sidewalks. A, a sidewalk. At least some assurance that we could work towards a sidewalk on that short, short distance along them.
During our, we, we, you know, we had to submit a courtship permit for both entrances. I can discuss with District Seven about sidewalks and see if they, that'd be acceptable to them, and if they, if so, then we can consider that.
If they would allow it, I, I think it would be, it's much needed. There's a lot of foot traffic in that area.
Right, well, is, if they're, if, if they're, they're okay with doing that on the right-of-way, then I, I, we can, we'll definitely look into, look into that improvement.
Is that gonna be a condition still, or? I mean, we need to have something in right-of-way.
You got insurance here, you want, you want it right in, or?
My, my thought, you got sidewalks going to nowhere, cause there's nothing that's connected to it.
If we don't ever start making people put sidewalks in, we ain't never gonna get sidewalks in this town.
You gotta have that starting so that you can connect to the next one beyond it, and then it's gonna have to continue down, otherwise you'll have nothing later on.
Yeah, there's Burger King and everything else down through there, people are going.
There's a lot of people walk through there.
If they're okay with adding sidewalks, I'll make it a, a condition number.
I will, we will try, I mean, if, if, if District Seven doesn't allow permit it, then, I mean, I, there's nothing else that we can really do, but we can.
If they deny it, then that's fine, but.
I'll make it a.
I don't know why they would deny it with this sidewalk and what else?
Make a condition number sixteen, then?
Sixteen?
I think, uh.
Isn't that fourteen?
Yeah.
Or it would be fourteen, cause we backed it up. That's right.
Sometimes they will deny it because you're promoting pedestrian in areas that they don't want pedestrian to, whether there's people there or not. Sometimes they don't want to promote that, so they, it could be.
Uh, he's, Ben's correct about that, so.
What number is that?
They don't want people like watercrows and grids.
Condition fourteen.
They need to come look at Cherry Blossom, look at the footpaths that are in dirt right now.
It's sixteen on our paper, but fourteen on his.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'm not trying to say we don't, we don't need, that's, that's one reason to stay.
Why would it be fourteen?
Wouldn't it be fifteen?
Oh, I've got.
For, for Charlie's, I separated the conditions after this, that would be a button as well, I mean.
Okay.
Just so it would be clear, you know, we don't chance that one got approved.
So just add it as a condition to, it would be fourteen.
It'd be fourteen on mine, but that's a sidewalk from where to where? Is that just along Connector? Or is that on the, the front?
Just along the, the, uh, straight boundary of, of connector to the.
So, so the frontage, the frontage of the whole thing then? Okay.
Yeah. Road frontage. We have motion in the second.
Mr. Caldwell, did you make a second on that motion?
Yes.
That was second by Mr. Caldwell. We'll do a roll call on this, please. Mr. Wiseman?
What are we voting on? Is this the new variance, or?
No, we're gonna do, he's, in his motion, he has asked for the variances to be included with the, uh, conditions of approval.
Okay, yes.
So Mr. By, Wiseman votes yes. Mr. Solsky?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Mizell?
Yes.
I vote no. Well, I just, I have my reasons. Not that I don't want you there.
Rob's like that sometimes.
I just have my reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Solsky.
So, thank you, guys. Guys, can we take a break?
Yeah, that's fine.
Can we take a five minute?
We need the chair to do whatever.
I gotta go, do, you the chair.
Yeah, I need a five minute, please. Uh, it won't take me about two minutes.
Poor Joel, poor Joel said no, but. Much five more minutes. Application is the timber frames?
Yes.
ZMA twenty seventeen dash oh nine, and FSP twenty seventeen dash ten Timber Frames and Other Things LLC. This is a public hearing for zone change.
Um, my plan tonight is to talk about both the zone change and the preliminary subdivision plat at the same time, uh, just to review the whole site altogether, and then you can make your motions on both applications separately. So this, this application is for a just under fifty-five acre parcel located in the northeast portion of the county, just southwest of the intersection of Davis Road and Davis Turkeyfoot Road. What they're looking to do tonight is rezone the property from A one to A five for that entire fifty-five acres, and then submit a preliminary plat for seven new rural residential lots between five and eight acres each. As I mentioned before, they're located at the corner of Davis Road and Davis Turkeyfoot Road. The aerial just shows you the location. There are two existing five acre tracts that have already been approved on the site through staff level review as a minor. So those two lots do exist already on site, and you can see them here on that, with those parcel lines. This is the concept plan and preliminary subdivision plat. The grade out portion are the two existing lots that are already created, and then lots numbers three through nine are proposed with the plat. They all have, um, all lots but number three would have frontage along Davis Turkeyfoot Road, although they would not each have a driveway, I can get into that a little bit more in detail, um, later. But for the, the review of the zone change, we look at the, the same language and KRS that we always look at. Section one hundred point two one three, um, requires that before any map amendment is granted, the planning commission must find either that the plan is in compliance with our adopted comprehensive plan, or that it meets a couple other, um, requirements if, if it's not in compliance. But through the staff report and research, we find that this proposal is in compliance with our comprehensive plan. As of right now, the comp plan says that all areas outside of our urban service boundaries is proposed for agricultural use, including rural residential development. Now, at the time the, the, um, comp plan was last updated, we hadn't yet created the rural residential zone, but it's been interpreted, interpreted with this and other applications that the rural residential zone is an appropriate, uh, type of use in our agricultural areas. Further, it has not yet been adopted yet, but our, our current comprehensive plan update recommends that the, the A five zone district be recommended in the northern parts of the county. Remember on that draft future land use map, we had kind of a buffer area, half mile buffer around our urban service areas, and then the northern portion of the county, we were recommending rural residential scale development. So even though that hasn't been adopted, this is going in the direction of, um, what we're looking to see in, in our community. So with that, staff's ultimately recommending approval of the zone change for that, for the rural residential use. Just to go over some of the standards that you'll encounter with the A five zone district when you compare it to the A one, um, it has very similar standards, but there are a few small differences, and one of those differences is in the setbacks. So the primary structures are required to follow a fifty foot setback, just like in the A one district, but it allows the secondary structures to be twenty-five feet along the rear and the side of the property, not just fifty feet all the way around. One of the concerns that we have still with the application is some of the access points. When Ben and I went out to look at the site, we were a little bit concerned about the site distance available. Davis Turkeyfoot Road is pretty windy, there's lots of trees, it is pretty difficult to see. So we'll need to make sure that there's adequate site distance for each of the proposed entrances before approval of the final plat. But that is something that we can work out with the applicant, um, after your preliminary approval. They will also need approval through the County Roads Department for those entrances. I'm going to just look at each of the lots and, and the location of their proposed entrances. When we went out there, several of these places marked as existing are actually quite new and don't yet have approval. So we'll need to make sure that that gets taken care of. So lots three, four, and five would utilize a shared access easement. We think, we think there were some, some site distance concerns based, um, on a curve in this area that might be able to be cleared up with some, some work in the area, but we'll need, we'll need to confirm that there's adequate site distance. When we were looking at the proposed shared entrance for lot six and seven, I think we were looking more where, um, this, this entrance that I've crossed out, the surveyor, Joel Day, has, has indicated that's not the preferred entrance at this point anymore, and they're planning to use one on lot seven, but we weren't in, I don't think, that exact location. So we're gonna need to narrow in and make sure we know exactly where that is in order to verify. For lots eight and nine, they're proposing, um, two separate entrances, and they've actually built them right next to each other, at a bit of a crest in the hill, but it's, um, a little bit difficult to see. And so from talking with Ben, he's recommending a, the northern one before entrance and the southern one before exit. It's a little bit easier working that way. But I think also this proposed or existing entrance that they've shown right on the edge of what's proposed is, is track nine, I don't think that they intend to develop that one anymore either. Is that correct? So that's, that's the approximate location of the, the desired lots and entrance points. I think that we should be able to work them out, but if for some reason we can't, they might need to readjust the lines. And in that case, we can work with them as long as they're not trying to increase the number of lots. Um, I have a couple of pictures that we took. This one is at the southern part of the site, just, just as you pass lot nine, you're looking south here. You can see kind of one of the bends that creates a bit of a difficulty. Those are the two entrances that are, are for lots eight and nine that are built right next to each other, and we're proposing that become an entrance and an exit. Here's a curve around where we thought the proposed entrance for track six and seven was supposed to be. We weren't entirely sure on this site, we'll have to go back out and look at that. And this is the existing, um, newly constructed entrance for tracks three, four, and five. You could, there's a pretty difficult bend right here, um, where traffic comes around pretty quickly and it kind of drops down, so, so it's hard to see the, the cars, um, so we'll just need to double check that. A couple of, of the other requirements that you encounter with the A five zone district is a requirement for fencing and landscaping along the buffer between the A five zone and the A one zone. And, um, the applicant has requested a waiver to the fencing, um, to allow, instead of the diamond mesh wire, which we talked a little bit about at Monday's workshop, they'd like to instead use a, um, nine gauge rectangular, kind of spaced, six inch by twelve inch rectangular spacing. In my review, I found that to be appropriate, um, based on the, the general character and use of the area. There's, there's not much livestock use, um, it's pretty wooded, it seemed like that would be appropriate. You can take into consideration any of the comments and discussion, though, from workshop about whether or not we want to stick to the exact language, um, or the gauge. I, I know that, we heard that diamond mesh is actually usually a twelve gauge wire, not a nine, so that's something else to consider, but the applicant would like to use a nine gauge in that rectangular pattern that we, uh, were talking about earlier. As far as the landscaping, um, there is a one tree for forty feet, but it's already pretty wooded out there, so they should have plenty. We just need to see the calculations officially on the plat by the time they bring in the final. But they should be able to use that existing, uh, landscaping. They'll need official, like, final sign-offs from all of the utility companies. They're starting to show some utilities easements based on comments from Bluegrass Energy. If there are any changes or additions from Kentucky American Water or Wedco, they'll need to adjust there as well. One final thing is they'll need to include an animal unit capacity. That's something else that the, the zone district requires on the final plat. So we'll need to make sure that gets included, uh, in, in consultation with our extension office. That said, we're recommending approval of the zone change for the fifty-five acres, and preliminary approval on the subdivision plat. I am recommending approval of the waiver, um, and then there are several conditions of approval. Numbers one through four are pretty standard. Everything on this sheet, conditions number five through ten are particular to the A five zone district, and just making sure that they get all of the language or special conditions that that zone requires onto the final plat. Those are my recommendations on these two applications. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Megan? No questions, Megan? Is the applicant here to speak?
The only thing I would say.
State, state your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Randy, Randy Reynolds. And, uh, no, the only thing I'd say is, I think they've done a good job, she, they've been very thorough. They've been out to the property, uh, and the things that, some of the things they've mentioned is the obvious thing that we would expect, uh, from the utilities and those types of things. And of course, we do want the safety of people coming on the road, so we have no problem with that.
Any questions for the applicant?
Have you read the conditions of the approval?
Yes, I have.
And you're okay with that?
Yeah, I think so.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak on this application? No one else is here to speak, we'll close the public hearing. Now, have any further comments, questions from the commission? Any questions on that fence deal that we was talking about Monday in the workshop? Steven, one, one question on that fence, Steve, or John, you may know. When you go from twelve to nine, is that bigger or smaller?
Bigger.
The, uh, twelve gauge is smaller gauge wire.
Smaller gauge.
Nine, the smaller the number, the larger the wire that's used to make the.
I just say something about that.
Stand right, Joe.
On Joel Day. The original cluster rigs called for six by twelve nine gauge. And when we did Dreamchase, we had asked for a waiver in order to use what they're calling diamond mesh, what I call no climb. We had asked for a waiver to use it, and now it's.
Now, that's the standard.
Now, it's the standard, but anyway, because of the, you know, the rural, it's somewhat rustic, the property is. But my thought was, the good fence that is there is six by twelve. And if we go in there and do, you know, a third of the fence, or whatever it is, in, in no climb, you're gonna have a patchwork looking thing.
Is the fence good fence there now?
Uh, some.
Some.
Some, yeah, it's gonna need some work, for sure, yeah. And I don't know that any of it has board on top. I, I don't think any of it has a board on top. But anyway, I just wanted to point that out, that, that, uh, we had to get a waiver to use, to use the no climb on Dreamchase, and now it's, it's the standard somewhere.
I think the attempt was places where it was near, near town or near agriculture, especially livestock farms, keep the kids from climbing it.
Yeah, and keep, keep from climbing it.
Keep kids, pets, no, nothing, nothing.
Any other comments? If not, we need to, uh, take a motion on the zone change first.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zone change from A one to A five.
Motion by Mr. Shirley, what you doing? What you doing, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Simple's good, yeah. I quit talking.
Did you second, Mr. Moran?
Yes.
A second by Mr. Moran. We have to do a roll call, Frank Wiseman?
Yes.
Mr. Solsky?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Mizell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Zone change approved. Now for FSP twenty seventeen dash ten. Those are creation of the lots. Is there a recommendation, recommendation on this, please?
I would like to recommend approval with the waiver and the ten conditions.
I'll second.
Chair.
I got a motion by Mr. Shirley with the waiver and the conditions. There's a second by Mr. Solsky. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion approved. Thanks, sir. Sign your papers up here, please.
The next application on the agenda tonight is the Risk Property Cluster. This is a preliminary subdivision plat for ten cluster lots plus, uh, preserved area in two tracts. And the application is proposing that those two tracts only contain one dwelling unit on the larger preserved area, so there's a total of twelve, or a total of eleven, um, dwelling credits on the twelve different lots that are before you tonight. So there's a total of 12, or a total of 11 dwelling credits on the 12 different lots that are before you tonight. The site is just under 60 acres and is located at the eastern end of Wisteria Lane. There are two proposed variances with the application that I'll talk about as I go through it. As I mentioned, the application is at the extension of Wisteria Lane. They had a previous application reviewed by this board in August of 2016. And that was to approve the preliminary lot layout for five rural residential tracks on the southern portion of the site. And so we're looking at the remaining just under 60 acres on the eastern and western edges of the property. I've, I'll show you the proposed plat next, but I just wanted to show you over the aerial and in relation to Stonecrest and Aberdeen where, where the different portions of the site are located. So the cluster lots would be at the extension of, of Wisteria. And the, the road would be extended all the way through to the east of the cluster lots. And that would be where the preserved parcel A obtains its access. And then the preserved parcel B would be created on the western portion of the, the property. And they would access their site through Risk Lane and this, a short extension of, um, an access easement area that's connected to the preserved parcel A. But parcel A would not be utilizing that access area. This is the preliminary subdivision plat. You can see the, the rural residential lots are still shown. They've shown the required landscape buffers and fencing around all of the cluster lots. With, this extension of Wisteria Lane is about 770 feet, just based on my measurement. So that may not be exact. That brings the cul-de-sac itself up to, I think it was about 1150 feet. That was something that I, I hadn't measured previously. And I, I believe the, the cutoff is 1,000 feet, or is it 1,200, Joe? It's 1,200, so that's fine with the turnaround?
Yeah.
Okay. So since there's the existing turnaround at the end of Wisteria, that's completely a non-issue. So ignore all of that. I'm just gonna work through some of the major points. Oh, I forgot I put photos. So this, this photo is if you were to drive to the edge of Wisteria Lane and then cut through the farm, keep going east. This is about the edge of, of, Wisteria Lane is right here. And then I forget the name of this other cul-de-sac that's just north of it. But with the new proposal, Wisteria Lane would be extended in this direction. And so all of the cluster lots would face the, the extension of Wisteria Lane in this location. Just wanted to give you an idea of the orientation and what was out there. This is an image of the fencing that was installed on the rural residential lots. Just to give you an idea of what's out there, I imagine it will be the same or similar fence around the cluster. Just to give you an idea of what that would look like. And that's the same as what the previous applicant was talking about. The landscape buffers, when, when they came in with their previous application, they had applied for a zone change on the entire Risk property and then withdrew the cluster application at that time and just got approval for these five rural residential lots. And because they came in in stages, we weren't sure what was actually going to happen with the cluster lots. We told them that they needed to buffer the entire length of their property fronting along the A1. And so in doing that, they now would have a bit of a double buffer. Whereas if they had brought them all in at the same time, we probably, it would only have been required on the southern portion, south of preserved parcel B, the rural five tracks, and then up north along the cluster. Based on the cluster ordinance, you only have to fence along the cluster lots to the preserved area. So because they put this fence in here, I don't, I'm not sure if we also need it here. I think the fencing, the way the cluster ordinance talks, they should probably include that, but maybe not some of the landscaping that goes with it, since they, they had to comply and install that here. So that's something that I, I didn't address in the staff report, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear since we had worked back and forth quite a bit on the landscaping since the application came in in different stages from what had originally been proposed. I had five kind of general things. I didn't want to go through each of the elements of the cluster regs. They're, they're very thorough in the staff report if you want to read them, but these are the ones that stood out for potential discussion. Technically, the cluster ordinance says that the preserved tract is supposed to be in one contiguous parcel. With the, the previous application that came in, there was a lot of discussion about the preserved tract, how it connected to parcels, as they're now shown, parcels A and B with this 50-foot access easement. One of the concerns or issues that we encountered was our requirement that a maximum of three lots can utilize a private access easement. And by allowing the parent tract to connect over that, it created a situation where there were always at least four lots using that access easement. So what I instructed the applicant to do was just create a separate parcel for that western portion of that kind of wooded area all the way on the western part of the, the property. But to use that, to, to create that lot without a dwelling credit. And so the, the reason I did that was just to clarify the access easement. Now you can have parent parcel B, rural tracks one and two utilize one accent, access easement from Risk Lane. And then you get those rural residential lots, three, four, and five utilizing the separate access easement. And parent parcel A, the large one, would get their access from Wisteria. So that clarified the access. But in doing that, it created the need for a variance to allow a second preserved area tract. That's, that's technically why they need a variance now, because I instructed them to do that. The one concern is that when, when they first came in, I had talked about whether or not that should be appropriate in calculating for the area for the cluster. So if you think that that, since it's now separate, should no longer be part of the cluster, it would mean that they lose two of their dwelling, their credits for cluster lots based on the size of that preserved tract. In my mind, I think it's easier if you just allow them to have that waiver. I know we generally don't like to grant waivers if they're not really needed. But I felt that this was the cleanest and clearest way to, to fix the access problem that the layout created. And they already got approval for those rural lots, those five rural lots. So it effectively created the shape and size. And then we were, we're kind of stuck with that shaped lot. So it's just a matter of whether that continues to be considered part of the cluster area or not. There's another variance based on the depth to width ratio of the lots. Now, in my staff report, I wrote seven. When I did the calculations again, I got eight. So there's either seven or eight lots that exceed a two-to-one depth-to-width ratio. And that, that's based on the, the size and shape of the lots. Based on where the rural tracks are, the depth is pretty set for all of those lots, right? You're gonna extend Wisteria Lane through the center. All of those lots are gonna have the same 350-foot depth. You can't really do much about that. The only thing you can adjust is the width. But they could make those lots wide enough to avoid this ratio problem. But we had previously instructed them to shrink the lots because they would have access to public sewer. So if they could shrink those lots and take them out of the Royal Spring Aquifer, we were recommending that. And so I think by shortening the road and by keeping those lots out of the, the aquifer recharge area, that's actually a benefit. So I, I see that as a reason that 25 feet of width on the lots is not really a substantial issue when you look at a lot that's one and, one and, it's 1.2 to 1.8, I think, acres for each of these cluster lots. So they're off by a little bit on that width-to-depth ratio, but based on the layout, I think that this is an appropriate layout. And they're working with the arrangement that they have there. And they were following the instruction that we gave them to reduce the size of the lots. The landscape and fence buffer, I talked about that on the last slide. I think that we might be able to waive some of the landscaping just on the eastern edge of the cluster lots to the remaining parent tract, because we required them to put in extra landscaping along the southern portion of the parent parcel A. I do think that the fencing should, should probably be required there just for consistency. They will, in order to, to create these cluster lots that are less than one and three-quarter acres, they will have to make sure that they get final approval from GMWSS for public sewer. If they can't do that, their lots will need to be between one and three-quarters to two acres each. That's the approved size for, for lots without access to public sewer. And then the last note there is HOA and deed restrictions are required by clusters. So we'll need to see all of that information prior to approval of a final plat. With that, my recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat with the two variances that I talked about. And those are to allow a second preserved tract with no dwelling credit. And then the second one is, is to allow an exception to the lot width-to-depth ratio. If you want me to describe those anymore, I'd, I'd be happy to. I know they're a little bit atypical, but I felt like in this case, they made, they made sense based on instruction that we had given them to resolve other issues. These conditions are pretty standard. The first, they have to do with making sure we get GMWSS approval and then meeting all of those final details in the cluster ordinance and getting the approvals and lists of, of statements or notes on the final plat. If any of them need further explanation, I'd be happy to review them. Otherwise, I can just answer general questions or let the applicant speak.
Anyone have any questions for Megan?
Megan, did you also mention here that there's gonna be a right-of-way for a-
I did. I, I forgot to include that in the presentation. But one of the buyers of the rural residential lot has been working with the owner, Miss Risk, to provide a access easement for a future public, non-motorized trail that effectively would go, it's gonna be easier to describe this with a picture, from this little triangular three-quarter acre piece is owned by the county, just right along the railroad. And the proposed legacy trail would fall on this eastern side of the railroad. So the idea is that if and when that ever happens, if and when we could ever get some sort of bridge or crossing, to have the opportunity for a spur that would cut through this, along the, the parent tract and along this provided access easement. And it's, right now, it's just showing here, but then eventually you could figure out if it cuts through this preserved area or up near the church. You'd have to figure out where it would ultimately go. But they wanted to include that, so that would be included with the plat.
Question I have, will you approve the first five parcels there? I know we discussed one way in, one way out, and how, what is the, and then now we're adding an additional 10.
Yeah, that was something that you guys mentioned at, at workshop.
I left early, I apologize.
That's all right. I, I went back and I listened to the August hearing and discussion. And it, it was talked about, I think there were 238 lots that already utilize the, the main entrance. In the discussion, there was some general concern about it, but the consensus seemed to be that you couldn't really require them to do off-site improvements on the Bryngardner property. The fact that it was at a rural scale, you know, made it manageable. Yes, is it an increase? You know, yes, but we also can't not let them use their property. So there wasn't anything in the final motions saying that you would or would not consider it, but it was part of the general discussion. But that was also something that they did consider, or you all and fiscal court considered during the, the zone change process.
How many lots, what do we try to stop it at before we keep going, before it becomes a safe, like the-
Well, there wouldn't be any more lots-
For emergency.
Out this way. It's two, it's 200. In a typical subdivision, it's, it's 200.
So we're at 238, we're going to add 10 more.
For single family, would it? Yeah, for- Oh, okay, yeah.
100 multifamily.
And there's, there are some duplexes and triplexes.
So with this being a mix, how's that work in?
I'm sorry?
With this being a mix, how's that work in? With the Wisteria and all, you know-
Is it supposed to be 100 lots?
It's over in either case.
You made a comment, Megan, we can't really keep them from developing their property?
That's a hard one.
I kind of understand that a way, but in a way, if it's a public safety thing, I don't-
Um, I can say from a public safety perspective, they were, they're proposing to build the road at city standards. They do have access, it's included in here from Joe's analysis when he was reviewing. The, the fire access seemed adequate. They have water, sewer. I think that's one of those difficult ones that we just need to weigh. You know, because if, if this is not allowed, for example, they would have to wait until the Bryngardner property moves, which I don't know if or when that will happen. Or until the city, you know, decides to build a street.
Well, if I remember correctly, it was a few meetings ago, he, or maybe it was the August meeting, Mr. Bryngardner was, said he had no future plans to develop that.
Yeah, he was present and talked at that one.
Right. So it's kind of landlocked.
Well, you also, you've mentioned one time too, am I correct that the, uh, this one border is the, the urban service boundary, is that right?
Right.
And this, this would be a-
The urban service boundary currently actually includes this property. On the, the draft comp plan that we were working with, we had actually taken this out. I think we'll want to adjust to make sure that we include the cluster lots since they're gonna have access to urban services. But generally speaking, the urban service boundary falls right here. And the, this property was actually zoned green belt at one time. Or that was part of the discussion when they came through with the subdivision. So this is the edge for now of the city. And the green belt is meant to be that kind of holding line.
This would be the last, last lot.
Right, there shouldn't be any, any other extensions. You've got the railroad here, this, I don't see this farm developing anytime soon. They're outside of the USB. They don't wanna-
And the preserved tract can never be built on.
Until it's annexed would be the only time that, if the city were to annex this property, they could then subdivide it or develop.
That's why, to get back to your question, Mr. Chairman, if there were other access points, then you'd require them to stub it off or do something of that sort. This is kind of like the end of the world. It's really not gonna go anywhere from here. So unless it creates a real safety hazard, this is the sort of thing that probably the law would say, we need to allow reasonable use. And what little bit they've gone over the standard is probably not unreasonable. Again, if it did have other opportunities, then no, we'd need to stand on those. But railroad, green belt, empty property, bypass, it's just not a whole lot of opportunity.
You said this preserved parcel could be developed if the city annexed it, or?
If, if it were to get to the point where the city was expanding far enough that they did want to annex the property, then the, the cluster ordinance allows for kind of the disbandment of the preserved area.
They'd have to get a zone change.
But yeah, they'd have, they'd have to go through all the normal processes.
Yeah, just like any other part of the urban service boundary, they'd have to go through all that. But that would then be an option, it's not here.
But we're not being asked for a zone change here.
No, this, this property is already entirely zoned to A5. That was recommended back in August. And you all voted to, to rezone the entire 80 acres and the fiscal court- And the fiscal court then made the final action.
On, on the fence, Megan, would that still be the big square fence, or would it have to be a diamond mesh?
Um, it would be the same fence, uh, that they had kind of indicated that they would follow the same pattern. Hill, is that correct? The fence would be the same rectangular.
And then y'all also mentioned, I think one of the conditions, if it, uh, not approved by the GMWSS.
Right.
Does that mean they have to come back before us, or is that a minor, they would just go to?
I would consider that a minor enough change. It wouldn't increase the number of lots, it would just change the size, but if, if you'd prefer to see that come back, we can, that could be written in.
That was just a question I had. If it would be a minor or a major?
That would be a minor unless for some reason something else popped up, but if they're not changing the number of lots, it's just kind of a, a layout change, we would just review that in-house. If it for some reason meant that the lots had to get so big that they go over the length of the cul-de-sac, you know, then we'd have to come back.
Anyone else have any questions for Megan? If not, we'll hear from Matt. Do you swear in?
Yes.
Oh, no, it didn't. No, do you swear or affirm statements you're about to give with the truth, best information, please?
Yes, sir. What, I'm sorry, what am I supposed to say?
You got any thing you wanna say to help approve this thing, or?
Well, I think he said he'd agree to whatever you wanted to.
Exactly.
Any questions?
This is Mr. Agreeables, so take advantage of it.
Yeah, we kinda like. You agreed to all the conditions?
Yes, sir.
Everything, so, uh, if you don't have nothing else, that's all we need to hear. Unless there's any questions from the applicant.
I have a question.
These ten, uh?
Ms. Smith?
These ten lots being smaller, I think that's a good use of this, uh, these one-point-seven down to one-point, one-point-two acres. You'll find lots like that around, around Georgetown. But this preserved parcel over here, I can see that being thirty-five acres, that's a, that's plenty big enough for somebody to have a nice small horse farm. Or a cattle farm, whatever they wanna do with it, but I think, I think these ten lots would be well-served with a diamond wire fence around them.
Yes, sir.
You'd rather see the diamond wire or the?
Yeah, it's made, it's made so that if you've got kids or something in here, they're not gonna climb out, you've got Mr. Bryngardner's farm over here.
That's what worries me too.
Cause if, if they, if they climb over and, and out in this, uh, if you've got kids in the backyard and they get over there and, and there's soybeans or something, they're playing around it and they're harvesting crops, it could be, be pretty bad. Sure, there's plenty of opportunities for that in other places, but we'll try to make it work here.
Ms. Mizell, do you have some?
Yeah, on the previous application, there was an issue with the stormwater plans, has that been addressed?
That was something that the, the commission asked our engineer to check prior to the final plat approval. So that'll be something that Ben would need to confirm prior, and I, I don't know the status of that.
I'm not aware of a question. Would you be making sure that with me?
There was some issues where there was concerns that stormwater was going, drainage from where these houses and stuff are being built, was, the stormwater was going to drain off and cause issue with the surrounding properties and such. And, um, Mr. Combs, your predecessor, was going to make sure that the stormwater wasn't going to do that. And I was wanting to make sure that that was gonna still be addressed.
For the five-acre tracts?
For all of them.
No, I think it was a pre-existing condition, wasn't it?
Brent, Brent had looked into it and said it was okay with us, but now it's happening.
Betty up here, please.
Brent, no, Brent had looked into it.
State's name, Betty.
Betty Justice with now, Tony Justice PLS. I gotta get you started. Brent had looked into it for the five-acre tracts and said that everything looked good then, cause he said at the time that all the water was coming from actually up the street. It's where it's gathering down there, the Kane Run Farm, and, uh, hold on, I've gone. Coral's Farm, how that water goes through there, and he said he had looked into it and it was fine with the five-acre tracts. If you wanna look into it with the ten acre, with the ten tracts, it's all good for us.
I wanna make sure that it wasn't good, with everything else being added on, it wasn't going to cause issues with the rest of the houses too.
We could make a specific note of a new condition number thirteen to follow that language.
Okay.
Just to make sure that that happens.
Follow-up.
And if, if based on Steve's comment, you could also specify the diamond mesh. If that's preferred.
Was that not in there? No, cause they're asking for that six-by-nine.
Yeah, I was making diamond mesh. It's kinda like Roger said the other day, it's, uh, in the bigger scheme of things, labor's the big thing. Using the same amount of labor, same amount of post, it's just, enough greed and wire, and that wire lasts fifty years. Kids can't climb out of it, and pets can't climb through it.
Would that go on number four, Megan? Would the fence thing go on number four, Megan?
Yeah, you could either add it there, just clarify that it's diamond mesh.
Number? And it's, there is no number nine diamond mesh, it has to be a number twelve diamond mesh, is that right, Steve? Is that?
I don't know, it's a, it's horse, it's horse fence.
I wrote down that he said all diamond was number twelve.
That's, that's lighter too.
That's, that's kinda what I thought he said too.
It is light.
Yeah, I thought he said lighter gauge.
It is lighter gauge.
Last long time.
That's a number twelve.
All that I've seen is a lighter gauge than a number nine regular fence wire. A lot of the fence that you see is nine and twelve. Your horizontals are nines and your verticals are twelves in most common fence, that's what most people use for just farm fence, your six-by-twelves. That's what it is, that's what they, they call it. Twelve nine, that's why I always, I was a little all over it. Everybody knew what that was.
Cause that's what we stand on when we climb over the next guy's property.
Ten forty-seven, twelve, eleven.
Is there any more, any more, any more questions for that, for Ben or staff or the applicant? Any more comments? I only got one comment. I've, I'm not too crazy about adding ten more lots where we're already over, where the emergency vehicles can get in, but this is kind of landlocked, so. Kinda like Charlie said, you know, you gotta let people use their property a little bit, so. We've already created this issue, why is ten more lots gonna hurt at this point? I wish we could get the second entrance into it, but I don't think that may not be a real possibility anytime soon.
I think this is a good use of the cluster subdivision too. This is, uh, this is preserving, uh, one very usable thirty-five acres and another eight, I don't know what's gonna come of that eight acres, it's gonna, it'll be a buffer anyhow, it's.
Kind of a mixed-use little area here, isn't it?
I don't know. It's not an ideal situation, it's the best we can do, I think.
I just wanna make sure, there's a couple members of the public here, I wanna make sure they're not forgotten.
Oh, anybody?
I thought I'd already asked.
I don't think so.
Does anybody else wanna speak? You don't wanna speak none? Uh. If not, if not, I'm ready to take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we, uh, accept, uh, it's the hipster B for FSP, isn't it?
FSP twenty-seventeen dash.
FSP twenty-seventeen dash eleven with the?
Yeah, can, can I ask a quick, before you go further, cause I've got it where it's a final in some places and preliminary in some places. What, what is this? This is preliminary.
So the, the number, the number on the thing is FSP twenty-seventeen dash eleven. Somehow, when we label them, sometimes we call them FSPs. Really, anything that you guys review is a preliminary, because it, it's gonna have to come back into us. So I always just call them preliminaries when reviewing them with you.
So should it not be PSP?
It should be PSP.
Sometimes they get numbered as FSP, it.
Well, actually, the condition sheet says P, it's just the report that.
PSP.
Yeah, the case file says FSP, so I put that on here, but I always call them PSPs when they're reviewed by you, because everything that you review is preliminary. There's always conditions and changes to come back in for the final. But we can try and make sure that we get those all labeled consistently in the future.
All right, so I'm gonna move that we accept PSP twenty-seventeen dash eleven with the two variances, one allowing the second preserved tract with no dwelling credit, identified preserved parcel B, and the second variance to allow exceptions to the lot width to depth ratio. And also with the twelve, what, are we gonna make that twelve or thirteen? Did you put something about fence in there?
Yeah, it's these twelve plus the thirteen, oh no, the thirteenth was, they're gonna, uh, uh, gonna review the stormwater issue. And I put quotes around it since it's not necessarily a stormwater issue, but gonna take a look at it.
All right, so number four should be changed from?
Fencing with diamond.
Yeah, diamond, diamond wire fencing.
That's right.
Diamond wire fencing must be installed around the entire cluster.
You done, Steve?
I think that's good.
So we have a motion by Mr. Smith for approval with the two variances and thirteen conditions. And we have a second by Mr. Caldwell. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Mr. Wiseman votes a no. Motion approved.
Uh, Ms. Parker, I need your signature before you go. Now, you can't be agreeable, she running, I've got a sign. Sign right there, date right there, and I'm gonna let you use red. So we'll know you've been agreeable.
Next item of business is the election of officers. You wanna go over anything, Joe?
No, not really. You can do it however you wanna do it, so.
Well, we have to do this every year, it's a yearly thing. I'll just put it out there, you know, I've been the chair for two years, I enjoy being the chair and wouldn't mind staying the chair. But that's up to this commission to make that determination. Be another two years?
Can we elect the entire slate or do we wanna do one at a time?
You can do it all together or one at a time.
Whatever you put in motion.
No, we just changed officers recently, cause of the move, was it Janet Holland? And that, so I'd like to leave the slate as is.
That's our move.
So we have a motion to let?
Anybody else have any desire to be, uh, chair or on the executive committee?
Do you?
Absolutely not. I just, I can't commit the time like some of these other folks do.
I, I'd say it's, the executive committee's worked pretty well with staff, I think most of us showed up when we needed to be there.
It's not what Joe told me.
So, we have a motion to keep it as the same, we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Are there term limits? Do we have term limits? Why, what's it say?
Mr. Wiseman was the second.
I'm, yeah, I made a motion.
Now, thank you very much.
Are there term, term limits to president, vice, uh, are there at all, term?
Actually, yeah, I think there is. It, it might be.
No, we looked.
Well, we'll study it one, it used to be, we may not have put that in last time, we'll, we'll study it sometime.
We never could find it. We looked it up, we never could find it.
Well, we get around to it, we'll study it, and if we don't, we definitely need.
We're limited eight, eight years anyhow.
Maybe just a short.
Definitely in favor in our, in our national.
You gotta stay off one and you come back soon, but we'll look at it sometime. Not gonna worry about it.
Not today.
You better believe it.
We'll double-check if there are, we'll have to re-elect next, next month.
That was my only concern, cause I thought at one time, when I jumped on, they were, they were.
I think that was just for you, Mark.
Yeah, it could've been, thanks, Charlie. I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
We got two more things here, we got two more things here.
I thought you asked him, he said it didn't happen. You got some HU fifty-five.
We, um, I'll let Megan talk about the HU fifty-five, the other, um, projects and agenda items. I don't know if you had any questions for Ben, I'll probably have Ben start updating where we are in projects, uh, as far as ongoing projects under, um, construction and, you know, just updating on what's going on in the field.
That used to be, I'd put out a list, uh, status of every project, it would either have review, under construction, paved, not, uh, building homes, whatever. On, there was a list, there used to be like three hundred on that list, so. If you wanna see something, let me know, we can, we can put it together. I don't know if you wanna see a list of three hundred projects again, but, it's a, whatever. Think about it, let, let me know.
Can you give an update on the Crumb Bowl or Charlie won, the cell tire on Crumb Bowl?
Oh, uh, well, there's not a whole lot of update to it, the, the judge ruled against us, uh, and actually ordered us to issue whatever approvals and permits necessary. The approval, or I'm sorry, the deadline for, oh gosh, I've, I've forgotten. We've got thirty days to file an appeal and I, there's no, I mean, there's just no basis for that.
Did we miss a response ever? Cause I had a community member say that the reason it got approved was because we had missed a response. And I said, not that I'm aware of.
No.
And I'm sure you probably know where that came from.
Well, I do. Well, I, I probably do. Uh, no, the, the only thing that I think was, was being referenced there was a, uh, statement in our brief, no, nothing was late, everything was perfectly timely. There was simply, if you will, a tactical decision made by, uh, our other counsel. Not that I disagree with it necessarily, but it was made by, um, uh, to kind of put the eggs in one basket, cause that's the only basket that we really had a, a chance on. It wasn't much of a chance, judge didn't buy it. I think the comment was not that we missed a deadline or, or missed getting something in, but basically we didn't follow some of the other arguments, because there was case law directly on point that said those didn't fly. So instead of arguing the same ones that this very judge had ruled against before, he put all his emphasis in one spot and the judge didn't buy that either.
So we didn't appeal, but did the property owners around either file a lawsuit or an appeal recently?
No, no, the, the company appealed, because we had turned it down. And so Verizon, yeah, Verizon.
It was Verizon.
Uh, appealed it. Uh, they took us to federal court and federal judge, I can't believe it went to school with it. Caldwell, ju, uh, chief judge of, uh, the Eastern District of Kentucky, ruled on it. And quite frankly, spent thirty-some odd pages in the decision, which I was kind of impressed with, because it all came down to, no, you can't. So, anyway, but there's just simply no grounds for appeal. The person you're talking about did come up with one particular ground and I, there's no way in the world that would work. I mean, I understand his point, uh, and, and it logically, it's, it's rather kind of clever, but it's not gonna fly. The judge made it very clear, so.
Will they build it, were they originally proposed, or were they taken into consideration?
No, that extra two-hundred feet that they offered that night was a, that night only thing, yeah. So they'll, they'll, they'll build it right where the application was. Now, I don't know when, uh, they'll wait the thirty days, which I really think's probably already gone, but I, gosh, I can't remember that date that the judge's opinion came out. But I'm sure they'll wait till like the thirty-first day and then they'll contact and say, give us something that says it's been approved, cause that's what the judge ordered.
It's been pretty close, thirty days.
It's, it's been real close, uh, but anyway.
They'd be subject to the sunset clause if they don't, or wouldn't they be? I don't know, they'd be sub, they'd be subject to the sunset clause if they don't, or wouldn't they be? If they got the permit, they got the permit, they can hold on to it forever.
If anybody has any pull with the, uh, state transportation department, with the state road department. I, I pulled off, uh, seventy-five the other day at Sayville, there where the new love truck stop is. You get to the end of the ramp and you try to look to the left, see traffic coming across the bridge, which there is a lot of now. You can't see anything because of all the trees and the, the cedar trees are growing right to the garden.
Oh, okay.
You're completely blind, you almost have to pull out into traffic where you can see.
You always had to pull out a pretty fur piece to, to see much, so.
There's a lot of traffic there now with all, especially with all garbage trucks and things.
Is it the south or north, so I take it every day?
Uh, it would be, yeah, if you're coming, if you're coming south.
Okay.
You're coming south and you get off there and you, you, it's pretty blind. But, and all the trucks do stop there to go into the truck stop. Probably a dangerous.
That's why they keep pulling in the front, I guess.
Might be. They can't see until they get out. If you pull, if you go to north, come back that way.
You got anything else, Joe?
No.
You're Megan.
So we were gonna do some HB fifty-five training.
Yep, about an hour and a half.
Yeah, hour and a half, that good?
You don't need me, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna go eat dinner, that's all I.
We have two, two training opportunities that we just wanted to make sure you are aware of. Um, there's one on Wednesday next week hosted by LFUCG. It's only a half hour, but it's legal decision-making for planning commissioners, so pretty relevant. Um, it's free and available. Um, all we ask is that you are SVP and let us know either tonight or by Monday so that we can give them a heads up. Um, so that they have appropriate number of materials and chairs in the room. Um, it's from four to four thirty in their, in the planning offices there. Um, and then the next one is the APA Kentucky Spring Conference. Um, it will be, uh, May eighteenth is the full, like, full day of planning commissioner training.
Do that again.
Oh, that's nice.
It's a pretty reasonably priced thirty dollars, it's at Lake Cumberland State Resort Park. It's, uh, in coordination with the state planning, uh, semi-annual conference. So if you wanted, you could also sign up for the Friday, um, at the not quite so reduced rate of seventy-five dollars. Uh, but they, they really try to make the planning commissioner training, uh, price, uh, convenient for people, for people. So I don't know for sure the length of the hours, the person who's coordinating it hasn't worked out all of the final logistics. But one of the legal session with the, the planning conference, I, and I help coordinate these conferences, um, we're trying to cross-list that one so that the commissioners and planning staff and attendees would all go to the same hour and a half training for the legal one.
So the legal one would be at this?
With the, it'll be, um, longer, it would be, um, the, the person who does it, um, he's done several that I've been to and he's pretty good. But I don't, I don't know what else would be in the, the workshop, I haven't seen the full agenda for that yet. But I, I can bring that to you next month, but I wanted to make sure you had the date. The early registration goes through April twenty-fourth, I believe. So it would give you time to sign up if you waited until the next meeting, but I wanted to make sure you could put it on your calendar and make arrangements if needed, so. That's all I've got, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan, when's the due date?
Uh, July fourth.
Congratulations.
And it's a boy?
I don't know, we're waiting.
It's a, no, it's a boy.
Find out.
Are we gonna wait all nine months to find out? Two future pros.
There you go.
Wow, good for you.
The old fashioned one, you're exactly right.
But just let you know it's a boy.
That Megan, there was long as it's, everything's got, he or she's got all her parts in hell.
I'll take a bet, I'm saying it's a boy.
Anybody wanna bet?
I was just getting ready to ask you.